He's crying, my head's cutting his head. Short back this time.
I got six o'clock mayor. Not to rush you, but uh...
I know, I got soccer games at seven thirty.
I'm talking high and tight, not just short.
Found my cup?
Did I lose it?
Yeah. I think I left it in the city car when we went to OML. So misplaced it, yes. Just coffee, this time.
You ready mayor?
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Where's your camera?
Can you hear me?
Good afternoon!
Okay, we're about ready to start.
Is this ours?
Yours?
Can you hear us? Okay, thank you.
All right, I didn't know if we could or not. We're about ready to start, so everybody, if you haven't signed the attendance signing sheet, please do so. If you want to talk on public comments, it has a place there to put down what you'd like to talk if you'd like to. So do that before we get started. Sergio, she wants to talk to you. There you go. Okay. With that, we will, I'd like to, I'd like to welcome everybody to the, this is a special meeting because we postponed the other one, but anyway, I'd like to thank you for coming to the special meeting in Guyman City Council tonight. Before I called, before we open the meeting, before I call the preacher up to talk, I want everybody to bear in mind and think tonight, one of the Guyman team, one of our, one of our employees, Steve Christian, his wife passed away this weekend, so everybody keep him in your prayers. It's a tough time for him and we all get pretty closely attached around his place, so if you would, so at this time, I'd like to introduce Pastor David Player, Victory Memorial Methodist Church.
Let's pray together. Beloved heavenly father, we are thankful for this evening. This is the day that you have made, and each of us chooses to acknowledge you, to express our gratitude, to rejoice in all you are and all you've done for us. You've been so, so good to us, and we are deeply grateful. Lord, we do think of Steve Christian, who is going through grief and loss, comfort him, wrap him up. We pray for all of the family here at our city council, a close knit family, be with them as they support and take this journey together with one of the employees and his family. Lord, we do thank you for the way we care for each other here in Guyman at our best. We're more than neighbors, we feel like family, we look out for each other, we there if there's a struggle or a loss, and I pray especially, Lord, that those bonds of love and care would grow deeper and stronger. Tonight, we think of all of our leaders in our local government, give them wisdom, give them courage to do what needs to be done. I pray for a spirit of cooperation, of creativity, of vision for the future. Make Guyman a strong community, Lord, as we continue to grow. Bless our road project, bless our water project, bless all the big companies that have come in here and offer employment, bless our agriculture. Lord, we are grateful for the way we have developed and thrived, especially over the last decade or two. And tonight especially, we pray that you would draw us a little closer to yourself and to each other, make us a people that you'll be proud of. We pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Sutter, would you let us pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedras?
Present.
Mr. Sutter?
Present.
Ms. Sanchez?
Present.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman?
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item three.
Second.
Motion in two seconds.
Sutter?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four, this is a presentation by John Holland with Enterprise Fleet Management for Vehicle Lease Purchase Programs for City Vehicles. So Mr. Holland, at this time, I will turn the podium up to you, over to you, in lightness.
Who's driving? You gonna drive? All right, perfect. I'll just give you a... I definitely thank you guys for allowing me to come out and share this with you. I've met with Mike a couple months now. We've probably been at this for five or six months, so we've come up with an idea or a plan for what this would look like. A little bit about myself, I've worked with Enterprise for 15 years. I actually opened our fleet management division. Little fun fact, I somehow ended up at Penn and Ulster State for one year to play some baseball. I got hurt, decided to move back home, but at any rate, I did have some time out here in Guyman and enjoyed it thoroughly, probably too much. Might have met, I wanted to show you all during that time. But anyways, at this point, I'll kind of go through what Enterprise Fleet Management is. We're a family owned company, we operate the largest fleet in North America. What that means for cities that I've partnered with, I'm able to help reduce the overall cost that it takes to operate your vehicles and give your city a safer, more reliable fleet with a much less of an age to it. So I'll kind of get into just it, I'm just gonna be a big overview, you've got my synopsis. I don't want to bore you with this, all the details and all the stuff that Mike and I went through, but we will hit some high level points and make sure that there's a good understanding of what we're doing. Today is just a presentation, we would come back for an agenda or an action, I believe, if it makes sense to do so. First and foremost, there's quite a few cities that have came on board. We've partnered with, the way I kind of got government started, I started working with colleges and universities, and then I moved on to the city government throughout my career. Over the last three to four years is really where we focused on city government, and just over the last six months, we brought on Paul's Valley, Jammer, Marlowe, Watanga, Craig. I was at a council meeting yesterday for Alba, and so it's become very popular. It's giving cities that are not, and in Oklahoma City, the abilities to have the same types of fleet because of the dollars that it costs to upkeep a fleet like this. So just a few of ours, again, that's in the presentation, so we'll look back at that. Really, when it comes to the fleet of vehicles, our fleet...
You didn't do the thing.
I'm not getting it right, I'm sorry about that. When it comes to vehicles, we go into cities and say, what makes the most sense for a partnership? Through my and I's conversations, we're looking at acquisition, funding, agents of fuel or options, and then vehicle resale is really where I think that we have the largest impact. When you take a look at what Enterprise does extremely well, we buy vehicles at very, very good cost, we operate them more efficiently than probably most, and then we resell vehicles better than anyone out there. And so if we take that philosophy, that what we've done well with our rental division, with our fleet clients, and apply that to the city approach, it really does make a lot of sense. So a lot of people ask how to get started, there's always the due diligence of bid process or RFQ, or, we're actually the awarded contract for Sourcewell. What that means is that nationally, we were awarded a contract for fleet management, allowing you to get our best possible pricing. Every city that I've partnered with and every university, with the exception of OSU, they were my first government client in Oklahoma before Sourcewell, we rewarded that contract, has been part of this. So it makes a lot of sense to piggyback off of our best pricing, but more importantly, the due diligence process that went into putting that fleet management proposal together. So the difference between Enterprise Fleet Management and you going out and purchasing a couple of vehicles, we're actually going to provide local account management. Some of y'all may have met Melanie at the conference, she would be its local account manager. She's from Buffalo, which is really weird too, but she would be out here three or four times a year helping plan this out. But the most important part of this is we're going to take and collectively figure out what your vehicles are costing you from a cents per mile standpoint, and it gives us the ability to operate these vehicles as efficiently as possible and help you determine which vehicles need to be replaced. From an acquisition standpoint, every vehicle that we can get, we can either do it one of three ways. The most cost effective way is to order the vehicle exactly how you want it. That's been pretty important over the last four or five years because vehicle costs have been way up. What I'm most proud of saying with Enterprise, we didn't raise our prices, we were, for our government clients, we were factory invoice, less all the incentives. We didn't mark them up four or five percent like most people did. So we stay true to what we've made ourselves very popular in this space by staying true to our structure and our pay, pricing plan for our cities. I do have the ability to go out of dealer inventory, but aftermarket, police outfit, service bids, anything that you can think of, we have the ability to facilitate and make sure that that's done before y'all guys get the vehicles. Here's a good example of what we're talking about when it comes to just the vehicle cost itself. If you click it like three times, it'll get, maybe four times, it'll get all done on one slide. So what makes this interesting, Enterprise has been doing this for 60 plus years, we buy vehicle extremely well, we keep our operating cost rate very low, and then we sell those vehicles for more or just not the same amount that we bought them for. That's what our rental division is really became popular for, is getting rid of vehicles in a timely fashion. We take that same approach, if you rent a vehicle 10 years, that vehicle's going to cost you roughly $30,000, and over those 10 years, $3,000 outlay. If we run that vehicle four years, it's the same $3,000, so why would we run it 10 years to get all the operating costs and maintenance? Additional sets of tires, I mean, it's really crazy to think that most cities could operate vehicles with oil changes and tire rotations, that's really all you would need to do on it. We take this and we look at it even further, this is where Enterprise's recommendations based on actual fleet, what's happening with the fleet, doesn't make sense to get rid of it at certain points. We made it right in two years and sell it for, in this case, $33,000. That cost us $2,400 a year to operate that vehicle. And for a lot of our government clients, with the exception of police units or something that has heavy aftermarket or a low resale valuation, trucks, medium sized SUVs, these all make sense to do, at least look at at the end of total months. Make sure it's not cost effective for us to go and sell that unit. Enterprise's remarketing abilities, we're able to sell these vehicles for sometimes more than we bought them for. And that's kind of the key point, is we're going to come in and make recommendations based on y'all's actual data. We have transitions, sorry about that. So kind of the meat and potatoes of this, all right, you've been replacing 10 to 15 vehicles a year, spending $400,000 to $500,000 to do so, how do we get into this type of program? If not for the same capital, a little bit less? And so what we've done is we have opened a equity lease, that's our government municipal lease that we call it, is reviewed annually, so it meets that criteria. No mileage in a lease, no wear tear, and the city retains all equity at the end. So if I take a $50,000 vehicle down to a $10,000 balance, the city benefited because they're only paying for $40,000 over those five years. At the end, when I sell it for 20, the city's going to give back the equity that's left, so they give back a check for $10,000 in that, in that example. What they would typically do, either run it into the general fund so that they have a way to pay for this program, or they put it towards the next vehicle, lowering the cost of that next generation. Local shops, the list is updated every six months on vendors that have been used by our clients, so there may be some missing, but I think we found six or seven that are here local. All dealerships are on it, all fire stoats, if a vehicle's good years, obviously there's, might not be the case in Guyman, but any shop that's here, Enterprise would be happy to add because we have other clients, we have Sammerson, we have other clients that are out here, that would make sense to have a shop that they can utilize as well. So if there's shops that we haven't got located on our system, in an rural area like this, we would definitely be able to add them. Sorry, go back one time. So the key to this, data capture. We're going to put a maintenance program on your existing new vehicles at a budgeted cost, and then on your existing vehicles, we would actually put a maintenance program, then we would negotiate all repairs, make sure those repairs are fair and just, pass you on that bill with no markups. The reason we do this program is now I know exactly how much you're paying per mile on maintenance, and I can make a recommendation based on that data to say, hey, this is the vehicle that's costing you the most, this is the one we need to get here and go sooner rather than later. Pelomatics Fuel, y'all guys are on WEX, the biggest benefit is with that Sourcewell contract, if y'all are paying fees, I don't think we dug into the weeds on that, but if you have any fees, fees through WEX right now, they would actually be waived through our partnership or awarded contract that's part of that pricing structure. And then vehicle resale, it's really the pinnacle of this whole thing. We don't auction vehicles very often. 15% of our 1.1 to 1.2 million vehicles that we sell a year go to auction, that's the ones that are tore up, that'll beat up, the ones that need to go to an auction. Our clients that are running vehicles one to five years, we are taking those directly to our buyers, and selling those vehicles at a premium, typically 15% better than book value, which is set by auction prices, resale prices. So we are setting that market. It's not a, look how big we are, it's just that's what we've learned how to do, very, very well with selling vehicles on the back end of it. All this comes with technology. At the end of the day, we are going into a world that's very AI, very computer generated, and the more data that we can have, the better our recommendations could be. So again, this is the direction Enterprise is going with, data capture, analysis based on that data and so forth. So I did put this in the presentation, it does give us a good example, I don't want to go very deep into it, I know I respect y'all's time, but this is a snapshot of y'all's fleet profile, you have 90 vehicles, of those vehicles, 50% of them, at least 50% are over 10 years. So when you see new vehicles, it's great, but whenever we look at some of the ones maybe that are having issues or having a spare because we don't know if that vehicle's going to last, this is where it can get very cost effective for you guys. And so taking that data, I mean, the net impact, and it's hard to see on this screen, but the net impact over 10 years, we had to spend close to $1 million in savings versus current process, and we had to use some industry averages, not all this data was available per unit, so we used some of our industry and our data to calculate y'all's pricing. But this will go over proposed fleet, 89, in taking a fleet from roughly 11, 12 years, average cycle to a 4.18, so most of your vehicles would be brand new every five years. Maintenance would go down from about 190 to 50, 56, sorry. Again, all this data points, all these things, this is what we project that we could do. In that first year is a good example, you're on average replacing eight vehicles for about $300,000. In the same type of program, we could replace 34 vehicles. If you can imagine 34 new vehicles that need oil changes probably once a year, tire rotations, there's not much that's going to go on with these, so you can already see an operational cost drop. And then as it grows, yes, the lease charge goes up, but your maintenance and fuel head went down, your vehicle resale has went up. So the net savings to this, it can be very impactful for you guys. And that's really what I have, y'all have the synopsis, it has my contact information if there's any questions that you think of after the fact, please let me know, but I open it up to any questions that y'all may have, this is short term.
So day one, what does that look like when we, you know, we do business with you, whatever, we move forward, what does day one look like as far as vehicle exchange goes in our program with the current vehicles we have? Because we've spent a significant amount of money the last couple of years on some newer vehicles, so what would that look like?
So we would want to transition into this, we want to dive into it full force, you have new vehicles. Actually, in 2023, you purchased 15, or you have 15, 2023 models. So you would actually transit to this over the next four or five years, and as you were transitioning in, you would be selling off. So current policy through the state and through most cities adopting the policy is that any vehicle that you purchase through the state's process, you have to sell through an auction that's up into the public. Once you're into the program, Enterprise is the title owner of the vehicle, so we can sell it however we feel best to sell that. So that does benefit to you guys down the road, but yeah, you would transition in, so in that first year, we bring in 34 vehicles, you guys would auction off your 34 oldest, is how we section that out.
I saw that you had a patrol car, so how about ambulances that would not fall under? I know it's very specific on when it comes to ambulances and...
Yeah, and I'll be candid, the only vehicles that we won't touch are ambulances and fire engines. Now, we brush trucks, I'll do anything like that, I'll do emergency management, so your spotters or your fleet vehicles that go out prior to an ambulance, but at the end of the day, the ambulance is just out of our niche. And I say that with a little bit of a grain of salt, because seven years ago, we wouldn't touch police vehicles. So my 15 years of doing this, I'm seeing evolution, and it's not because Enterprise's like, oh, that'll make us more money, it's our clients saying, hey, we need you to do this, if you're going to do this part of our fleet, we need you to do this part. Just recently, I got a quote for a trash truck, which I never thought they would allow us to do, but again, they're opening up to our clients and adding to our offerings.
Good to know. Thank you.
So if we, with your, with Enterprise, for instance, on police vehicles, other things that need to be, radios, markings, whatever, do you offer a program where they come ready to go to work, or?
Absolutely. Yeah, so my ideal plan for any city is not for you to have a vehicle that you're setting on waiting for outfitting to be done. So an ideal process, I'd order for Explorer. During that time where it's being produced from the manufacturer, we would have that outfitting planned and out and purchased and ready to go whenever it comes in, and then we would actually coordinate that to get done when that vehicle arrives. That can be tricky because outfit vendors are the same backed up as possible or backed up the same way, but like the utility intercept are hiking over that vehicle almost ready from the manufacturer, where they put the things on and the warranty is covered, even some of the outfit cost, or the outfits, sorry, the outfit that's being done, the warranty's still there.
The preliminary savings that you had on your presentation were nice, and that's over 10 years, correct? Does that factor, that probably doesn't factor in the headache that the staff goes through to find a vehicle, and then the headache we go through to try to sell a vehicle, is that, that's not really factored into that, that savings cost, is it, as well?
It would be difficult to put a time...
Right.
But that's the goal, is us to become a outsourced fleet manager that's basically your team. And so you would not only have your client strategy manager, you would have an account fleet coordinator, you'd have all these people that become your, really your go-to people, instead of having someone that has to put this on. And usually, in a city this size, it's not one person, it's these departments dealing with multiple time. And I'll tell a short story, I went to Alba last night, and as we're walking into the council meeting, one of their trucks pulled up, and it was like a 1990 S T pickup, and I know because I have one, but at that point, they're like, this is what you're here about. And I was like, absolutely, that guy doesn't have an air conditioner clear, it's 96 degrees and his windows are down. That's, that's what we're here for, is that type of situation, where we can better their lives, we can better the way that the city looks, and so y'all guys have spent a lot of money changing your logo, your image, even for no items here.
Any other questions?
Bucket trucks are in there, right? We can't do bucket trucks, that was another one that I just was not aware of, that I didn't ask the right questions to the right people. We have a whole division of media duty now, that I wasn't, I wasn't aware that we would jump out into these little areas that we weren't probably the best at. From about an F-750 down, we are what you would consider the experts in those types of vehicles, we have to rely on some people for those bucket trucks, dump trucks, those aren't, those aren't stuff we do all the time. But we can.
Any other questions? Mr. Holland, thank you so much for taking your time, and I know you've got to head east, so drive careful.
Charity thing, all right, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, agenda item number five is a report from Main Street Guyman. So ladies, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor, council. Mr. Shannon, I previously sent you our first and second quarter reports for you to review along with the director's report that I'm turning everyone to the board. Before I ask if you have any questions about those, I'm going to share just a couple more things with you. We have two more farmers markets coming up, this Saturday and the 28th. We are, at both of those markets, we have another meeting at the market. This coming Saturday, we'll have a pickle contest sponsored by Holmes, for who has the best pickles in Texas County. And then on the 28th, anyhow, First Bank is sponsoring a Mexican street corn contest as well to try and draw a more crowd to those last couple of markets. Sunday, as you know, is Guyman Fiesta, it will be down on Main Street. I appreciate council and Mr. Shannon working with us to get that back on Main Street. Our downtown businesses are very happy to have that back there where they can open their stores. Along with that, we offer scholarships to OPSU for the Fiesta King and Queen. We have 10 students this year that applied for that to be the Fiesta King and Queen. All 10 of them will receive a scholarship from OPSU, and the King and Queen will get like a sweeter deal, so. It's a really good thing for those students as well. And then on Friday, the 27th, we are partnering with the Downtown Lounge to put on a fundraiser for the Loaves and Fishes. They have a really huge need for peanut butter, and so they said it's one of the biggest things that they get a request for. And so Chris and I were trying to figure out some way to partner together, and so they're doing a fundraiser, it costs a jar of peanut butter and a jar of jelly to get into the lounge, or $20, and that'll get you free cheese, free wine, free peanut butter pie. The $20 donation, if you don't want to do peanut butter and jelly, we'll go and buy extra peanut butter to donate, and then of course, they'll have their regular menu, and that'll be on the 27th, so we encourage everyone to come out and help. And then on October the 3rd, Main Street has now joined the shop and dine group downtown, we're a partner of now. So we'll be a part of that event every month. And so, can I get anything?
Um, Melody, I'm with I Love, Ken Smith, board chair of Main Street Guyman. We're excited, we've run this new to the rule in the last year, so we're celebrating for one year anniversary this month, this September, and just want to give kudos to her, we appreciate all that she's been doing in building these partnerships, building these relationships. We recently went through our cut and hew process, learned a lot from the national... Learned a lot from the national and state level about kind of direction out of Main Street, and we're excited to be able to go this for our 20-year anniversary. So Main Street Guyman came to you in 2004, and so we're excited to keep it going and keep promoting the historic downtown district, but also all of our things, right? It all will grow together and rise together, and so we just appreciate running everything she's doing. And she's out of town in October, so I'll get to be the one giving you updates.
Do y'all have any questions?
I'm not seeing anything initially, of course, I haven't scrolled through this yet, about the awning projects that we do through Main Street. How many of yous have we awarded this last year?
We haven't had any this one.
We haven't had any this last year? Okay. Everything that we...
The program they have passed a while, and we're in the process of bringing that back.
Okay, cool, cool, cool.
That runs through our design team.
Yeah.
And so that's something that we're not bringing back. And we're hoping that we can award some of those along with the DCPIG grants that you guys offer us.
Right. Yep, 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 yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We'll see you someday.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is a report from Guyman Chamber Commerce.
Good evening. I first would like to thank the city clerk for letting me know that I had been placed on your agenda, so I was prepared to be here this evening because otherwise, I wouldn't have been. I had other engagements that I needed to attend to, but thank you for making me aware of that. I sent you all my newsletter for September and my director's report that I provided for the board. That includes everything that is currently going on. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, so.
Do you still send out your newsletter to like all of your businesses?
Yes, ma'am. Every chamber member gets a digital copy. Well, chamber members get a digital copy as well as a print copy, and then if you subscribe to our newsletter, you get that digitally. If you are not receiving it, I think that you should check your spam filter because spam filters do filter me out occasionally.
Thank you.
Erica, I liked the, any newsletter, the telephone calls you get, you should put that together in a book.
Some of them are quite entertaining, yes. Definitely. Any other questions? My door is always open. My cell phone is listed on every email that you get from me, so if you have any questions or need anything, have a great idea for an event to bring to the city. I would be happy to have a discussion about that.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erica.
Okay. Agenda item number seven is to note in the minutes the receipt of the 2023 CAFR.
Yeah, Mayor, that's the audit. I think I gave you one, yeah, that's the reason you don't have one before you, but Council, you received the audit. The auditor will be here next month, I believe, yeah, to give his presentation, so.
Have a good year.
Duly noted.
Duly noted.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number 794, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and zoning map. All lots one and two and portions of lot three and four, block 26, a portion of lots 15 and 16, block 27, all of lots nine through 16, block 30, and all of the, and all of the lots one through eight, a portion of lots nine, 10, 11, and 12, and all of lots 13 through 16, block 31, and a portion of May Street and 14th Street of the Stonebreaker Z Edition, also known as 1401 North Lea of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, repealing of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. Yes, sir?
Yes. That's why a legal description of your keeping track is 30 lots over four lots and a couple of vacated streets. We were presented with an application for this by PCHC in July 19th this year to change the zoning. They have plans to renovate the space in line with C1 zoning. We followed our procedure and the statutes, sent out 28 letters to the surrounding property owners, had no protesting, returned to us. We took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 3rd, and they allowed that vote to allow them to rezone this. So if we're here presenting that, how's that?
This for the federally funded mental health clinic?
Yes.
Also known as Heritage Center of Illinois.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve agenda item number eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
What a call, man. Aye.
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
You wouldn't read that?
I know, right?
Come on.
I was at a deviant of things.
Got five ayes. Emergency.
I motion to declare agenda item number eight an emergency.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 24-09, a resolution amending the rules and regulations of the Elmhurst Cemetery, including a revised schedule of fees. Your staff report is attached. Assistant City Manager Ginger, get after it.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of Council. Before we tonight discuss an important issue that affects not only the sustainability of our city, the operations, but also our long-term care of one of our most sacred spaces in the city, and that is our cemetery. As you know, our cemetery rooms have seen minimal adjustments over the past two decades. The last significant change occurred in 2014 with only a modest increase in 2020. This has left our rates trailing behind despite rising costs associated with maintaining this critical service. Over the last 20 years, inflation and other economic factors have increased the cost of labor, materials, and maintenance, yet we have not reflected these changes in our pricing. In addition to these rising costs, our city has made improvements to enhance the quality of services we provide at Elmhurst Cemetery. We've invested in new equipment that includes the purchase of a lowering device, a tent, and chairs. These investments help us serve our residents with greater dignity and respect during the most difficult times of their lives. I also included some pictures there for you to see what that equipment looks like. These upgrades are necessary, but they also come with ongoing maintenance and operational costs. While we deeply value our role in serving the community and ensuring affordability, it's crucial to recognize that these added costs cannot be sustained without the adjustments. Failure to raise the rates in the past has led to deferred maintenance and also to deferred equipment purchases. I would respectfully offer that we move forward with the proposed changes to cemetery rules and regulations and the rate restructuring. This adjustment would safeguard our ability to maintain our equipment, purchase additional equipment, allow for new software upgrades that we have been actively pursuing, and it would ensure the long-term sustainability of the very important part of our city, our final resting places. I understand that any increase, especially in services like this, requires careful consideration, but I also believe that this is a step that is responsible and necessary to meet the needs of our community today and for our future. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have. I know there's been a lot of questions asked in the last week, and we've been preparing since January to answer anything that we may come across, so entertain those questions if you have.
A lot of our citizens aren't aware of the fact that we need software to bury dead people? Can you explain that to the layman out there, please?
Okay, so some of the things that software does allow us is it keeps our database in an organized fashion where if we need to process deeds and payments, we can also see availability out of the cemetery. It streamlines that, but also some of our software that could go online can allow people that maybe they're down south or maybe they're, you know, where, they don't live here locally, or they can just run out and check the cemetery to see where the space is at. They can jump on, they can see where the level is varied at relatively flat, that's by a space search, which is what they will do by name recognition. So, yeah, it's definitely a high-demand thing in most cities, but I don't think a lot of people realize that that's an additional cost to us, so.
It has a map and everything on the software, so it feels like it drops a pin to where you need to go.
Yeah, that is something that we're looking at right now. We've definitely entertained a couple of software service providers. One of them we've actively looked at over the last six months, and so we've kind of slowed back our processes just because, you know, we've got to, we can't get the motion moving without taking care of some of our high-needs areas, so.
I understand, you know, the cost, cost of living, I mean, everything's going up. I understand that. Some of the, some of the calls I got were, I mean, these are 125% increases, and I understand we haven't done anything since 2014.
2020?
2020.
Yeah, there was a cost adjustment in 2020, but like I said, it was a $50 increase.
Got you. And I just, I think it's too much, and that's my opinion. I think we need to approach this as, in stages and not increase 125%.
I would be glad to entertain an explanation of the needs if that, if Council would like that. I mean, there was definitely reasoning behind it. First, first one thing that I would like to say is it was absolutely not based upon things that outline communities are doing. This was specifically geared to what is best for the City of Guyman. Things that were taken into account were the cost of labor, the cost of equipment, how many man-hours that we do put into those adjustments. And this price increase does not just include costs to spaces and openings and closings. This restructure is actually a plan that also puts into place the tent, the chairs, the, there's ground coverings that we have in place. That equipment is certainly expensive. We could, we could start there with that. But to kind of guide where those prices came from, it also took into account the equipment price with a three-year straight-line depreciation, and then on top of that was added in service for selling the liner and vaults, and then we would add in additional care for if they wanted tents, if they wanted chairs. There's different levels of the service. I do realize that a space increase is probably something that people, it might be a little surprising to them, but in comparison, although we're looking at what is correct for Guyman, in comparison, surrounding cities, we are, we are on the very extreme low end of that. We don't even break even for what we spend every year, our expenses and our labor costs. We don't, I mean, it's not something that we expect to break even, but our service that we provide through the cemetery, it's a lot higher budget than what people realize. I think we spend approximately $265,000 every year just to maintain the cemetery, and we don't sell enough spaces for that, so that's certainly not our goal is to become rich over the ill leader, so. Are questions in regards to that that you might have?
So can you explain to me the, the vault, the tent, and the chairs? Are the homes, the funeral homes not responsible for that?
Well, one thing is...
Are we trying to take over the funeral home's business or...
I don't think so. I think according to the state statute, that we do have as a cemetery and as a city, we do have the ability to be able to provide those services as a package for what the cemetery does. So we know that the funeral homes are vital services for things that they definitely have to be licensed for, like receiving the body to be able to embalm, to be able to take care of those kinds of services. But under the statute, you can, you can go online and you can purchase a coffin privately online through, there's a company called Titan that our local funeral homes are very familiar with, but you can jump in online and if you decide that you wanted to purchase a coffin online and have it shipped to your funeral home, under the federal code, they do have to receive it. And I know that that seems harsh, but those particular services under the statute, it does say that the owner of the cemetery can maintain control of that. So that might be a full of more explanation to that. I think it's also important to realize that having control of our destiny and being able to maintain our debts to the city is also a fair way to look at the responsibility of our control with what's in our control, so.
In that regard, oh, sorry.
Can you tell me how much item C that you land was before?
Yes. There at your desk, or at your, you definitely have a copy of the past one, hang on, just maybe a second. And the reason why those were, that was only increased to 500, so if that makes sense, it's not...
Right. I was going up, the increase, 125% was the regular, right? Because it used to be 200, now it's 450.
Yeah. And I will say that in the line items of two, a one, item one and item four cremation and the infant services, those are the exact same type of service that we provide. So when they do an opening and a closing, they're the exact, they're done the exact same way, so they don't require, like the MACO, they don't require certain equipment out there, so they're, they will remain lower. But one thing to know is that in the 2014 adjustments and the 2020 adjustments, those two services, you can do the same style of service, they never, they did not put the pricing equal as that. So they are the same style, and they should have reflected that in that pricing adjustment. And also, one of the things that we did do is we removed off of there a weekend schedule, so let's say Saturday services, they were a lot higher. The only thing we did is because the cemetery is typically closed on, we typically don't work on Sundays and on holidays. We did leave that as a, you know, if the sexton has any concerns where he wants to be able to hold the service or be, make himself available to be able to hold the service out there, we did leave the fee in place for that, just because, you know, again, it's a Sunday or a holiday, but we remained steady. We removed, you know, we had weekday and weekend service fees, and we just removed that and created one steady fee in there. And I think just because of the price adjustments, I think that is a nice balance for, for the fees.
So with the purchase of the tents and everything, is that something that the funeral homes will be able to use as well?
Absolutely. And that is really, that's to ensure that the city... Absolutely, and, and that is really, that's, to ensure that the city, that we maintain our responsibilities, that is one thing that we are requesting them to do is to utilize our service. But I can clarify that on, on that basis, too, they don't own those that equipment either. If that makes any sense to y'all, they, they contact a company, that company comes out, so we have to notify them, so this kind of streamlines that process. Our sexton doesn't have to contact somebody to come out and wait for that delivery, either open and close. That, you know, they just know that, okay, hey, here's, this is posted, it says the service is going to be on this date. They still maintain that communication, and now we don't have to wait for that service either. We're waiting on, you know, companies out of Kansas and a company out of Lubbock to, to drive up and to deliver that and set up for us, so it isn't something that they don't...
So, to calm everybody's paranoia around this subject, we're not providing any new services here.
No, we are not.
Right, right.
No, this is, these are something that we do, but this is also something, we, we do want to add the tent, the vault, the chairs, the linings. We do want to do that, but we're doing that to provide a better service to our community, so let's say, let's say they get called out, but they say, okay, well, we can't deliver until two days from now, we're coming that way, so they're, they're going to have to delay the service. But this is something that we provide in-house now, and they would be able to set up what's, you know, arguably, the service could be tomorrow, and we could go ahead and do that if they had, you know, if they had their coffin in place and had all the arrangements already taken care of, so they, they could, it streamlines it.
So, do they have to use the tent and the chairs and all that?
No, it's certainly not a requirement, so if a family says, you know, I want to skip all of that...
Well, so, if, if the, both funeral homes have their own tents and all that, can they still use their tents if they choose to, if the family chooses to use them versus the cemeteries or cities?
I think for our perspective, I think we, we would prefer them to use the cities, so that way our cemetery folks can go ahead and, go ahead and have it all set up. I don't know that it's all continual. I certainly don't think that, we didn't write anything in to exclude it, but I think what you prefer for us, just because, again, it controls the fate of, hey, this is already set up for you and our guys could go ahead and get that done. A lot of times, they're just waiting, they're waiting on that service to be provided, so they're waiting on the truck to come in and, and set up.
And all of that is still the option of the family, right? Like, a family could say, I don't even want a tent or chairs.
Absolutely, they, they don't. There's, there's a lot of families that don't prefer to have everything like that. I mean, and it just be, it's a beautiful hot day and, you know, we, you know, we really don't need that, so, or save money savings for them as well.
On people that have already bought a lot in the past and just, because it's next to their loved one or whatever, are those fees still accepted and not have, and like grandfathered in?
Absolutely, it's already pre-purchased, they already have that ownership of that space, so that's taken care of. It's not, you know, they've already made those arrangements. We're just, just like anything else, if I were to go to buy a car, you know, this is the price, I purchased this one, I'm a couple scared to eat, it's probably going to be more expensive, I could purchase the same thing, so, yeah.
All right.
Again, we're not trying to push the funeral homes out of business.
Absolutely.
Right? I just want, want to be on record with that, because that, that seems, I don't, seems to be the...
Yeah, but again, this is the service they don't provide anyway. They, they call out a contract to come in and, and they set up anyway, so it's not something that, they don't provide the chair or the tents and all of those services. They, they can upsell them if they choose to do that, but there certainly is a base fee that they charge, and we've kept that base fee very modest in comparison to, in comparison to our surrounding areas, so, yeah.
And I'd hate to make it to where we're not allowing someone to come in and do business in our town, but it does seem to me that the fees that we would be making as a city would outweigh the sales tax that we would get from a company coming in to provide tents for us, correct?
Right, they, they retain that. We, we get nothing from that.
Yeah, oh, well...
Other than, you know, whatever, yeah, you know, through the, if they excel at the funeral home, if they don't, then we don't see any of that, so. And I could kind of go through, I do want to, I do want to give you a little bit of a comparison, just with some surrounding areas. One of our employees put this together, and I did a comparison with that, just to give you the idea of what they do charge. Dumas, Texas has a population of 14,200, and the north lawn, the spaces are 650, opening, closings on weekdays is 1,095, and the weekends is 1,275. At the Dumas City Cemetery, the spaces are 700, and the opening and closings on every day is 100, $1,275. At Valley View in Garden City, population of 2,700, the space is 400, closing and openings are 450 on weekdays, the weekends, those are 750. Keep in mind, these are not with tents and all of that, this is just the open close and just the space. Maple Grove in Dutch City, population of 27,000 plus, the spaces are 500, opening and closing on weekdays is 450 and weekends is 700. At Rose Hill, the space is, there are 1,995, and the opening and closing is $2,195. Some other notes that I did make was about our equipment, and I know this is not the pity call here, but you have to think about what our, our guys are actually working with out there. The, the last equipment that they've had purchased was, we have a Case Vac-Go, that is a 2002 model. We have a dump truck unit that is a 1999 unit. We have our crew truck unit that is a 2006, and we have a logcat skister that is 2005. I think we probably know what John was mentioning earlier, our equipment, too, so it's definitely something that, it is really hard to say, you know, why we need, why we need to be very conscious about it, but, you know, in the scheme of things, it's our challenges that we have on a day-to-day basis for our operational costs. You know, absolutely, we do want to, we want to be able to pay ourselves back for our investment in our equipment as well. We want to be able to continue to be able to offer wonderful services to our community. But not only that, we've, you know, we've got important things that we would like to do out there. We have a, a continuous plan of care for out there and what our future looks like for our cemetery. We have roads that need to be resurfaced and paved. We have, you know, there's been mention at some of our things of, like, what can we could do to improve that area, and bathrooms have been a highlight. As we're expanding the cemetery, there's definitely things that we need to look at preparing. There's multiple things that, I mean, this could be a conversation that could go on and on, but there are multiple things that we do have to look at out there. You know, I do, I can express sympathy for it, you know, I know we've all, we've all been in a spot where we've had to bury a loved one, so I, I certainly know it's not an easy task for you guys either, but I know that we're also tasked with the responsibility of making sure that we're taking care of those areas, too, as, as administration and as government, so. Any other questions?
Ginger, we have touched on, how many, how many, and you may not have the information broken down by title, how many internments do we do a year?
So, I did my figures based off of 60 services, but last year we actually performed 80. You know, when you're putting numbers in place, you, you have no way of knowing what those numbers are going to be, so our average that I use, our average was around about 60 for the last several years, but it's, it's certainly not going to go down, and you know that we're, we've got an older population right now, and it's, those, those numbers certainly are not going to decrease, so.
How's this?
I think the better care we have of that place makes it more attractive for...
Are these numbers and increases based off just, just to break even in labor and equipment and stuff, or is it based off of potentially what we want to do in the future on software, equipment, et cetera?
It is based on that. It is based on being able to offer the software to the public, it's based on being able to buy a few new pieces of equipment in the future. It's certainly not a huge increase in there to set aside what those things really cost, but, you know, one thing at a time is really what we are looking at. The, the increase that we will see, we've built in a payback for the equipment, but we also, as we're flourishing that, we also have to think about replacing it. We've got to have a plan in place for any maintenance that we take on that equipment as well, so, but yes, we do have it built to where we can start thinking about our future out there. And to give us a little breather for a little while, too, so that they were not revisiting this next year, you know, hopefully, since it was 2014 and 2020, maybe we can outlast inflation, and maybe we can go another four years without having to really worry about it.
Any other questions?
All right, I thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the data and everything.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. It, it was a good presentation, excellent work, I just, I'd like to make a motion to table this, at least until next city council meeting, at least give us a couple more weeks to, to look this over, make sure we're doing it, we're doing it correct. So, I'll make the motion to table this till the next city council meeting.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second to table till next meeting.
Iton?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Okay, and thank, thank you to the staff for, for preparing a good presentation. Agenda item number 10, it's discussion and possible action to approve final report and payment of $10,247.91 for the Seven Days of Broadway event funded by Convention and Tourism. Yes, ladies?
Hello, we are Seven Days of Broadway. We are the theater camp that has been held two years in Gaiman. This last summer, we had approximately 45 kids that came to camp all around, from New York City to our local kids here in, in Gaiman. We also used 15 rooms during the two weeks of camp, hotel rooms, and we asked for $12,800, but we only used $10,247, and we used that for our hotel rooms and for our after-tasking room.
Okay. How many kids did you have come this time?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
Between the two camps, and like 21 and 24.
And we provided two free shows to the public. How many people came to our free shows?
Four free shows.
Oh, yeah, four, well, yeah, two days of, yeah, two days of free shows.
We had a total, first camp, we did Oklahoma, and the two shows for Oklahoma, we totaled about 250 people that attended. Our second show was Once on This Island, and that one, we probably had about 175 to 200 people attend.
Sounds good.
It was much better this summer because we had new air conditioning and a theater, thanks to, or some sponsors from the community. That was much appreciated over the last summer.
Well, I would, I would like to motion to approve the final report and payment of $10,247.91 for the Seven Days of Broadway event funded by Convention and Tourism.
Second.
Have a motion second?
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
I do.
Setser?
I'll abstain.
Iton?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four eyes and one.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Agenda item number...
Eleven.
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 Discussion, the water's still jumping around.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Just let me, let me, let me tell them what it's about. Agenda item number 11, it's discussion and possible action to approve G and G operators' LTD pay application number one in the amount of $359,529.16 for the CB, CDBG Street Improvement Project number 19010, CDBG 22. Now, it's on here.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor, Mike, Council. I'm Corky Newcomb, coming from Park Hill. We're the, we're the designers and the structure managers for the Latham Edition, it's that chi, chip seal and six street rehab. First, first item is the EDI, we finished our, our base repairs, our, our seal coat, and we're about to start the six street rehab, so it's a good time to kind of answer questions, see if you guys got any questions for me. Go in there.
Now, if I remember right, this project's getting paid for with ARPA money, correct?
A little bit of ARPA money, there's some federal money, the CDBG Community Development Block Grant, and just general funds for transportation or, or street funds. I, I will say something, and we'll get into some change orders there down below, because of the, the base of the streets, there's just no base in a lot of these streets. We probably kind of knew that in a roundabout way, but in one of the change orders, we found there's just no base. I mean, these streets probably been in there, what, 60-plus years? And I, I said it this morning on the radios, the radio show, that the streets really stink, and that's one reason why, there's just no base to these streets, and unfortunately, we, we dived into it and found some, I'll just be frank, over by Pat Allen Telephone's corporate offices was one of the places additional base, so we've got big problems. We got big problems throughout the whole community. Now, those will be addressed at a later time, but I just wanted everybody to know that we did find some big problems. These were small enough that we went in and got them fixed to make the seal coat pan out just about right, but this project's been long coming, it's been, what, two years now? We've, yeah, right at two years, and, but so far, so good. I'm, I'm really excited to get into rehab on Southeast Sixth. Now, that starts week?
It's starting about a week...
Twenty-third?
Yeah, one or two weeks.
Yeah.
We've put out the message, we're notifying the stakeholders, giving them some, some advance notice that we'll be closing off Sixth Street, and, and then the people that live along Sixth Street will have to, you know, park on the side, come through their alley, or we'll, we'll have nightly, we'll shore up, so they can drive across it, but it's not encouraged, because as we excavate down, we're taking that current gutter level, and we're excavating down by foot, so it's going to be quite a draw. What else? So, so this, this is why this is the time to kind of get them, them stakeholders aware of what's happening. Your brother getting his calls?
No. Well, and I will say something about that, during the chip and seal, G and G did go door-to-door with door hangers, they, they made some personal contacts and, and just advised in about two weeks before, and I was, I was thrilled. We still got some calls.
We're still doing some...
Yeah, we still got some calls, but to my knowledge, we hadn't had any, I mean, we had a few upset people, but it was all, all the days worked.
Yeah, this, this work is planned for about four weeks, so as we shut the road down, that, that four-week period is the time to, to reconstruct it, repave it, open it back up. If we start doing it block by block, it's going to extend that out, and it's going to make the pain for our, our stakeholders a lot longer, so... So we're, we're going to try to get it, get it in, get it done, be good stewards to our, our, our people that live there. But, but there's, we've got to pay our contractor, you know. Prop payment is important. This is a nice transition between the chip seal and then the rehab. So that's, that's why I think it's important to bring it to council today, kind of let you guys know what, what we've done, where we're going, and then you guys can determine if you want to ask me questions. So in this package, I concluded what the, what the bid price is worth. So if you want to know where this $359,000 came from, I've highlighted where in the bid package it comes from. And then, you know, there was a, there was a portion of the chip seal, there's a portion of the prime to get it to bond to that base. There's the cement, and then the reworked base. So that's, that's where all that came from, and that's what that is. Any questions?
How long is this going to last?
About four weeks.
Four weeks, then?
Oh, the...
Let's hope not.
Your, your seal coat is a maintenance, a maintenance activity. And what it does is it seals the moisture out of your base. Moisture is what kills your base. It starts making it soft. You start getting that heaving and pumping, and that's where, that's where you'll see the, the exposures. Now, in this contract, what we did was we identified all your, or the majority of your repair areas was where your pavement was failing. It was alligator crack, it was started saturated with water. Well, what we did was we, we BOMAG that up, we put cement in it to kind of make it cohesive. We struck it off and then we sealed it. So it's, I think, I think it's a great method of repairing the roads. It's cost-effective. You know, we're, we're budget constrained on this project. It's not, it's not an unlimited funding. It's not an unlimited amount of time. So, you know, the, the idea is we come in, we design it to what our budget is. We try to stretch that dollar as far as possible, and then, you know, we'll seal it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve G and G operator LTD pay application number one in the amount of $359,529.16 for the CDBG Street Improvement Project number 1901OCDBG22.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action to approve change order number one for G and G operators' LTD for an increase of $2,582.40 on the CDBG Street Improvement Project number 1901OCDBG22.
Okay. So this was a, this change order was an area that we repaired. As we cement stabilized that, we rolled it to get density. It had excessive moisture in it and a lot of clay. Clay, clay attracts moisture. So if we rolled it, it would dense spike. So we had to, we had to dig that out and use some surplus cement stabilized spoils from other patch areas. We filled it in, compacted it, and it bridged over that failed area. So it was basically an unexpected, unforeseen materials causing us to... So G and G, what they do is, is we, we looked at the problem, we identified what a, what a repair would be. They issued a price. We kind of verified that the price is reasonable and it's not, it's not, you've seen that picture of the two boats, right? The boat is the, the contract boat, and you see the big, big boat is your change order boat. It's not that way. We're stewards to the city, and we got to make sure that we're managing, we're managing costs. So, so that's what change order was.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve change order number one for G and G operators' LTD for an increase of $2,582.40 on the CDBG Street Improvement Project 1901OCDBG22.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to approve change order number two for, for G and G operators' LTD for an increase of $4,387.25 on the CDBG Street Improvement Project number 1901OCDBG22. I got that memorized.
Okay. So you all might be asking, why is this change order for repairs, you know, about $1,000 more than the last one we just approved? This, this failed area showed up when we already de-mobilized equipment. We didn't have, we didn't have the spoils anymore. We didn't have the equipment that's on site. So we evaluated, do we re-mobilize equipment? Do we try to find some of those spoils that we, we still had? Or do we dig that out and then go and get some new base? Compact the base and, and then redo that? So the, the best cost-effective method was, was they had some, some base that they had fabricated or made for a neighboring project. Then we went and borrowed that, that base, or basically bought that base. But that's what we did. Rather than digging it out, we dug it out, we put a new base in because we didn't have all the equipment to remake, reprocess the cement. That BOMAG, the mixer, that big piece of equipment, big white piece of equipment, that, what that does is it reclaims the dirt or the base and the asphalt and the cement, gets it all somewhere genius. Well, that piece of equipment is in the way because we were finished. Now we find failures, we have to find another method of getting it fixed that was cost-effective.
So was the oversight on us or was it on you? It was discovered by one of our guys. So the, I mean, do we have, should we be the ones responsible for paying for this when you guys shipped the equipment away thinking that the job was done, but it wasn't done? So...
Well, ultimately, the, we do the best we can identifying the failed areas. But as the rains come and they sit in a spot, they continuously keep saturating that base. And then your dump trucks come or mail trucks come, and it just works that moisture to the top, and that's where you grow your problems. So yes, it was discovered from Mike and Morton, but we had already, this was South May Street. We had already taken care of all South May Street and, and other areas. So it's just, it's just the nature of a, of a clay substrate.
Any other questions? Discussion, motion?
I make a motion to approve change order number two for G and G operators' LTD for an increase of $4,387.25 on the CDBG Street Improvement Project number 1901OCDBG22.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 14. Item number 14 is new business. We have none. Anybody having public comments? Anybody signing for public comments? Not will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. We're going to reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Okay. We've already done the call to order. Number one and number two. Number three is approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 13th, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes?
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five eyes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 25 dash, 24 dash 05 of increasing utility rates. Mr. Shannon?
Mayor, Council, this is, we tabled this from the last meeting. I just didn't really have enough figures or I just didn't feel comfortable enough giving you a full report. We, we was waiting on some solid waste figures, but let's, let's just dive right into the, the water part of this, hopefully, increase. And what brought all this on was watching our financials this, this last, well, since January. We're showing some deficits in our wastewater. Shows some deficits in our water coming to be, so it's, it's time to revisit the rate schedule. The rate schedule and the water part of it right now, as you've remembered, about five or six months ago, we had to take out a loan through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and to start our Mesa Water Project. Up to that point, Guyman Utilities Authority was basically at, at a limit of, we were making the payments, still making a little bit of money, but when we took on this other obligation, it kind of started putting a strain on everything. I'm going to stop right there. Two ways, three ways that cities have enough capital to provide services is sales tax. Sales tax and sale of utilities. Utilities normally help subsidize city services, police department, fire department, cemeteries. So everything basically is just throw it in one little pot and everything is divided out. But I think, I think Councilman Alvedres said there will go. He understands that the world itself has just increased. Everything that we've looked at, maintenance, cost of utilities, cost of utilities has raised, you know, 25, 30% over the last couple of years. Just a lot of different factors that went into this. And then the, the human factors coming in. What can people actually pay, afford to pay? I mean, they're getting hit at the grocery stores, they're getting hit at the, the gas stations, and they're just, and life in general. So there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, a lot of evaluations. We've changed this stuff around on the water usage. As we know, we're kind of in a critical stage right now on our water. Running out of water. We've found good water. That, I've got a little small report I'll give on that, but it's still going to cost us more dollars per thousand to get it to our homes. If you look on the residential, the usage, our old rates used to be zero to three for our minimum. And the last, we, we just visited rates a little about a year and two months ago, and we bumped that up to $23. A lot of people in this town are on fixed incomes, and that bothers me, especially when you start dealing with the utility rates. And it bothers those staff, not just myself, but, and it probably bothers you too. How the people on fixed income is going to be able to, to afford, you know, water for their house? So we bumped up the minimum usage to 5,000 gallons, zero to five is your minimum, and we've remained at it $23. The rest of it, basically, from six to 20, the more water you use, the more money you'll have to pay for that. Historically, historically. I mean, I've seen it back in 93, 94. The more water you use, the cheaper it got. And it just never made sense. So that got turned around the last 15, probably 15, 20 years. So with everything that's coming at us right now, these rates are based to help pay the existing loans off. Yes, we did get a significant amount of money from the state of Oklahoma. This is just what it's taken for us to stay alive and put some money aside for some small capital improvements. We run, I'm going to go back to the minimum. Your, your average house right now is using, with a family of two people, from, you know, to three to four, five units on the average. And that's the, the, I don't want to say, oh, let's go ahead and say it, the older people that are on the fixed income. I feel pretty good about that. Also feel good about the more water you're going to use, the more you're going to pay for it. That's going to help in a couple of different ways in water conservation. Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to be pumping a lot more water into town. It's going to be another year, year and a half, probably, I'm shooting for a year. But that's going to help kind of curtail our, our water conservation program. We've tried everything to try to get people to conserve water, and they've done a magnificent job, but we're still not getting the results we need to stay up with current usage here in town. But it, it's a hard thing to try to guess what, not, it's not a guess. I mean, we can put a pencil to this and show you where we will be making a profit. And in that profit, we can, you know, we can better fund cemeteries. We can better fund parks and stuff like that. So sales tax is about leveled off now. We're finally seeing the level of the sales tax. It's not going up, it's not coming down. So this rate increase is, well, hopefully, we won't see any red numbers. I know Rhonda, Rhonda, you still here? Rhonda left. I think she got called out. But the financial director, the last five or six months, just shows up in my office and said we're seeing some red numbers. This will take care of those red numbers. Our, our sanitation, I call it solid waste. We rely on exporting our solid waste haul to Liberal Kansas. They just hit us with an increase about 30 days ago. So that's taken into consideration. The only thing that, in our wastewater facility, we, we treat, we treat a lot of wastewater. We treat close to about three to four million gallons a day. The plan itself is probably close to 16, 17 years, and we have dumped a lot of money in repair and maintenance. It's wearing out. It's wearing out. But it's a facility that if we continue to keep using it, upgrading it, it's, it's going to last us for another 15 years. But that takes money to do that, and we've been spending money now that we've been robbing Peter to pay Paul. Paul being the wastewater, Peter being the water department paying. So it, it's just time to equalize stuff out, and this plan we have right now is going to equal, equal it out to where we'll be able to have a decent income. Gas rates, natural gas rates, there's, I'd like to revisit those after January 1. Our, our new contract comes in January, and that's when we'll be able to enact that. And I can almost, there's nothing, there's no such thing as a guarantee, but I'll, I'll, I'll go out on a limb saying they will be considered a lot cheaper this, after January. We'll just revisit that. But with that, I did, I did show some comparisons. Our utility rates, Guyman has some of the cheapest utility rates in the whole state of Oklahoma. It's, we're just at the bottom. We're just at the bottom, and we feel it every day. I threw some personal stuff in here. My, my parents are, I mean, when they were still alive, we still have a couple of houses in Boyce City. You'll see the comparison, what our new rates and what Boyce City pays. And Boyce City's already raised their rates up to where they're, they're making a little bit money, but they got a lot of stuff going on over there. Our rates are probably within the ballpark of quite a lot of other places. We run some scenarios. of quite a lot of other places. We run some scenarios of what it would cost individuals. We have that in some of our commercials. Your water rates with your sewer garbage rates and everything like, it could, you know, it fluctuates throughout the year. And in the year twenty-four, there'd be about a ten percent increase in some of your commercials. Some of your commercials, twenty-two percent. And we get into industrial, your higher users. Well, let's go back to, we have a lot of, we have a lot of apartments. They could see a high increase of close fifty-five percent. So, they use more water. They use more water, you're gonna have more wastewater. Industrial accounts. You'll see some pretty good industrial accounts. This is something that needed to be visited a very long time ago, and you'll see a seventy-four percent increase in some of your industrial accounts. They're broke down. It's basically the same percentage, but they just, they're a high user and they need to pay more, and they haven't been. On the last page of that, you'll see some private residents. I kind of picked on some of our city staff. I didn't ask them, but I hope it was all right. You'll see some people in there you know on the last page. It averaged out about fifteen, twenty percent increase. Some high-end users, people that has immaculate, immaculate water usage in yards, you'll see about, highs about thirty-five percent. But there again, if you want to keep your utility rates down, be conservative of your water. Chad and I just met a couple of days ago. We're going to start educating the public through OSU Extension. They have free services going to come out and tell you how, and how to grow grass that don't need much water. So, those education promises will probably start this winter. So, I'm looking forward to some interesting times ahead. And with that, I'd be tickled to answer any of your questions, but this is very much needed. One other thing that's in this resolution called the Consumer Price Index. A lot of your cities and towns and a lot of your personal contracts we have with other people use this as a multiplier yearly that the Consumer Price Index, it's all figured by the Department of Labor and the federal government. The averages anywhere for, the CPI in twenty twenty-two was eight percent, and it's been as low as point one percent in twenty fifteen. We're asking that to be incorporated in this resolution to where every year when the consumer price comes out, the utility rates automatically increase as what the federal government says that the rate of inflation is for that year. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if it would, which it doesn't, goes down, it'll go down?
It'll go down. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I did a printouts in two thousand and the closes, it went down. In two thousand and nine, it went to a negative zero point four. I didn't remember that, but I don't remember much about two thousand, and I don't remember what I did yesterday. But in two thousand twenty-two, they, it escalated up to eight point, eight percent, so.
Discussion?
And nobody likes to pay higher utility bills, but if the other alternative, I'll just quickly say this. If we don't have enough money to run a city, goods and services are probably one of the first things you have to start cutting. And so, that's plan B that I'd rather not go to. Everything else is going to remain the same. City staff, and we still have in place, if people cannot afford the water bill or gas, plus something like, we work with individuals. And that was very well used quite a little bit last summer, or this last year, so.
Well, I know you and your staff have done due diligence on this for a while now. We tabled this last time we talked about it. And the discussions that we brought up, I think we've addressed all of our worries. And this is fair. This seems like a very fair raise, and everybody's paying their fair share. So, yeah, I don't know.
I think the, one of the other things that you touched on, you know, if you want to be, have a lower bill, I mean, you become a little more conservative. And that, well, we changed from zero to three to zero to five. That opens that range up a little bit more. But it is part of all of us as citizens to help conserve water, so.
Yeah, last I checked, rocks and cactus, they don't take very much water in your yard, so you could start decorating with rocks and cactus. Just.
I think we've all found out through increased need for water behind and demand and use. People got to remember too, we're not too far from being on the edge of the great American desert. And so, we've got to start working into a conservation basis. I love my pretty green yard. Drive by and look at it today. It ain't pretty.
It's gorgeous, yeah.
I would rather have water to drink than a green yard.
So, any other comments, questions, discussion?
Well, and I'd like to say something too, Mayor, in closing, on my part of this. I'm going to thank the citizen, my staff. I mean, this is something I've been pretty grumpy over because it affects everybody in this room, everybody in this room. And when it's, I mean, it might change some people's minds to be more conservative, but what I don't want it to do is, our lifestyle in Guyman, we've been pretty blessed. We've been really blessed. And I want that blessing to continue, but I just want to, this has been, this has been pretty, this has been a challenge for us right here, let me tell you. But our future looks bright. I can tell you that right now, but we're going to have to watch our Ps and Qs. And everything from equipment use through our people here in town, our utility workers, they're being more conscious of what they do, when they do it. But I just, it's, this is quite an undertaking. This has been something that, it's kind of been an interesting journey. So, we're going to have to change our lives. And we can do it. Yeah, we can do it for the future of Guyman, no problem, I think, so.
I will motion to, if there's no more discussion or question, no, I think we're good. Okay. I will motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero five, increasing utility rates. Item number four.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Heidson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
All right. Agenda item number.
I think we're on five.
Five.
Yeah, I think we're on five.
I keep looking, they're on one. We've gone to highlights before. Agenda item number five, discussion of possible action to approve invoice number S one oh five seven eight seven two one four point oh 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 one in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to UTS for completing RTUS, returns to user on the AMI project.
Mayor and council, if you remember right, a couple of years ago, we went to the automated water meter system and gas system. Part of the initial contract when we got here was that if at when this company found a water meter that they could not dig up and replace, they called that a, our return to service. And they just, they just didn't do it. And what we're doing, we're coming back in afterwards and replacing all those meters. We're finding no problem in replacing those, for some reason, I don't know why, but they didn't replace them during the original contract. But it wrote in the contract, if that company determined that there was a car parked on it, or there was a dog close by, or the weeds were too tall, they just went, they just returned it to service and went on to the next one. I think we're, we started at four hundred. I don't see my utility guys there, but it's right at four hundred. We're down to about two hundred, less than two hundred right now. So, hopefully within the next thirty, sixty days, we will be a hundred percent electronic meters. So, with our own personnel picking up the tail end of this contract, not the contract, excuse me, what was not done by their contract, so, yeah.
Any questions, discussion?
And we're doing a lot better job, to be honest. I was bragging, I guess.
What the heck are we, I was, we were doing art this summer, and we saw inside of the building back here where all those meters are. What the heck are we going to do with all those?
We, we declared surplus, all the brass. Y'all allowed us to sell the brass. Now those gas meters.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. What do you do with five thousand old gas meters?
I hear an art project in the making.
Well, I, there's bound to be something we can do with it.
I bet we can recycle some.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're pot aluminum, they're pretty hard to melt down. Yeah, it's just not the most favorable recyclable, yeah. We're hoping maybe a third party, or third world country, but they hadn't showed up yet. I don't know. I don't know what we're going to do with them.
So, will this be our, like, final payment to the UTS thing, company?
If it's not our final one, it'll be close to being our final one. There might be some fittings and stuff, but I think all of our, all of our meters that needed to be replaced, I think we have control of them now. If not, they're, we're getting close. We're getting close.
I motion to approve invoice number S one zero five seven eight seven two one four point zero zero one in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to the UTS for completing RTUs, return to user on the AMI project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Heidson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number six, discussion of possible action to approve contractor's application for payment number one, final, to Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma Incorporated, amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and no cents for the northeast ground storage tank, contract B. Yes, sir.
How are you guys this evening?
Good.
You made it.
Again. Again. I'm Ryan McDonald with Park Hill, just wanted to take that for the record. This project, to give you a little bit of a refresher, this, what's up for discussion right here is the application for Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma. They were in control of the, are responsible for the radio control and telemetry of the new towers and the new tanks that we built this last year. This went out forbid the same time as the tank contractors themselves, and this was competitively procured, and it was awarded to them at the same time as the tank construction. They are the final step to the project. They come in after the tank's been done and certified and filled up, and they install the pressure transducers of the float level switches and integrate that into your current control system that your operator uses. So, they come in after the tank builder, and now this is their, their one and only pay application. So, I did confirm with both Tracy and the contractor that all the work's been performed, and it is in service and functioning as intended. So, this is just their one and done pay application for that. And I believe this one is for the northeast ground storage tank, and then the following agenda will be for the elevated tank. They were considered separate because of two different tank builders, break it up like that. Got any questions on that?
Have a motion?
I'll motion to approve contractor's application for payment number one, final, to Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma, Inc., in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for the northeast ground storage tank, contract B.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setser?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Heidson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion of possible action to approve contractor's application for payment number one, final, to Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma Incorporated, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for the elevated spheroid tank, contract B. I think we've already had an explanation.
Yep. I'll motion to approve the agenda item number seven, contractor's application for payment number one, final, to Worth Hydrochem of Oklahoma, Inc., in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for the elevated spheroid tank, contract B.
Second to that.
Have a motion in a second.
Heidson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Setser?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Are there any public comments? Carrie, you got any public comments tonight? No? Okay. Public comments? All right, we'll move on. We have no new business. Agenda item number ten is report from city manager and council members.
I've got a couple of little things. And Carrie, thank you for sitting out there. We've been working with the school on a, as you all know, a very well-deserved bond issue was passed. We're finally going to get a new third and fourth grade school and some other upgrades, but there, it's the third and fourth grade schools, we're going to have to move some water lines. We've been working real close together on what we're calling the, I think it's called the High School Water Relocation Project, but, but all that's coming together real nice. You all, as a council, approved us to go get it permitted. That's all been permitted. Park Hill has drawn the plans up to date, and as of today, and I just talked to the superintendent Dixie this morning, we're going to go ahead and bid that out. And, but it'll be coming to you all to get authorization to bid that out, to go ahead and get that done, where the school can kind of get to their, their building process. We have some major, major water lines we're going to have to move, and they've agreed to, you know, reimburse the city. And we've been working pretty close together the last six months, I guess you would say. So, anyway, thank you, Carrie, and your staff, or whoever, however we're going to call that. And Ryan, thank you for putting all that work in. The water project, on the Mesa Water Project, I forwarded you an email from Adur today, but the last month, Mesa, I'm just going to read it to you right quick, a quick update. In the last month, Waste Water, Mesa Water Project has completed three of the seven confirmation drilling test holes. The drilling team with Hydro Resources have been drilling operations underway. The fourth hole, they should be, what time is it? Probably within the next hour or two, they probably hit total depth. I'm sure they're planning on running the log on it tonight, so they're making great headway. Of course, we started about three weeks ago. Takes about thirty days to get the reports in for water quality. I know I've been pushing them a little bit in the log results, so I'd say something within the next week or two for test holes one, two, and three, we should have some very favorable results. You'll be one of the, you will be the first to know, yea or nay, basically. And it's looking real good so far. That's come from McGill, Will, and Tony with, with Hydro Resources. You know, they see that stuff every day, and they're, they're pretty impressed with what you're seeing right now. Councilman Alvedras was looking at a little piece of paper. I've never in my whole entire career, forty-seven years in municipal government, never seen a purchase order for twenty million dollars. It's twenty million dollars that was line item to the city of Guyman from the state of Oklahoma, was issued today about two-thirty this afternoon. So, that's funds that will go towards the Mesa Water Project. Twenty million dollar work order, or purchase order. Wow. Unbeliev-, yeah. Whoop, whoop, whoop. But anyway, that's, that's a pretty impressive little piece of paper. That's all I got.
Can I interrupt something for our community preparedness?
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I got that out there, too. We haven't, we have really been down on numbers, and we really kind of hoped that this event would really pick up and gain some traction. But on the twenty-third and the thirtieth, the next two Monday nights, out at the Texas Community Activity Center, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, we're still doing the preparedness, because this is National Preparedness Month. So, we're going to do, next week is going to be our emergency services, and we're going to do a roundtable with questions, Q and A. It's for the open public, so they can come out and they can find out what we're doing as a city to be prepared. There, we're going to have animal control, PD, fire, code enforcement, some other entities. We're still housing them out there during the preparedness event, because we don't know, you know, we don't want somebody to miss something. So, we met last night out there, and I have some videos that we're going to post tomorrow and get those out. So, we really want to get the word out for that. On the thirtieth, this will probably gain a little bit of traction, but we are going to visit about the Mesa Water Project. We've got Matt McKinley. He is going to lead that for us that evening. We also have a couple of other things that we're going to present. We're going to present water purification, and so we've got a group of girls that are going to come in and they're going to demonstrate that for us in case there's ever any interruptions in the lines, or, you know, you just don't. in the lines, or, you know, you just don't ever know what could, what could make somebody have to go into a boil notice. And it certainly doesn't have to be our community, but if they're taking it out to a different community and they happen to have that notice, they'll be prepared for that. So, that will be there. And then, I think we're also going to do a little bit about the code enforcement as well. And we're going to, that's going to probably be a little hot issue, and that, all the things that we can do. But I just discussed this with Chad, and we also want to present, like, ways that we can do our due diligence to be able to preserve and maintain the water that we have moving forward. So, anyway, I would like everybody to come out, and I would like everybody to spread the word about the event. So, that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ginger.
Thanks, Ginger.
Okay. You guys, do you have anything? Geraldine, Judge?
Sir.
Yes, Sergeant. I got just a few. As you can tell by the shirt, it's Panale State's homecoming this week. That's why I wore it. And so, everybody keep that in mind. What's good for Panale State's good for Guyman. Also, we, the staff, we had, the Oklahoma Municipal League had their, their annual conference last week in Tulsa. Guyman was, was very well represented. Yeah, stand up and show your shirt. We, we had, we had shirts for everybody attended, and you know, I got a lot of, had a lot of comments from people down there. They said, you brought, you got your staff to come from Guyman to this deal. I think everybody really gained from it. And one last thing, at Tulsa, I was in the elevator one night. Getting in the elevator, and these two, three ladies got on. This one says, hey, he's the mayor of Guyman. That's who we've been looking for. Oh, crap. What is, you know, what's going on? Well, anyway, what it was, was the night before, they had walked downtown to eat, and it got dark, and they were getting ready to head back to the hotel, and they were walking up the street. And I don't know who all was with them, but I think it was mostly our public works people, the guys that had gone to eat. And they, they told us, wait, wait, hold up. We want to, we want to escort you back to the hotel. And they were so, because it's not, that's not one of the best parts of Tulsa to be in. And they were so appreciative, and they said, you have a tremendous bunch of individuals that work for you, and those gentlemen, they were nothing but gentlemen, and we have such a good feeling about Guyman. So, I wanted to pass that along, because our staff are the best.
I, I agree to that, too. And I want to give some kudos to Ginger. Guyman was in the top three for the Innovative Award. I think the, the project that she submitted was the art project on the garage out there. We was in the top three. We didn't win it, but we won it.
Yeah, we got beat by Santa Claus.
Yeah.
It was tough, yeah. It's kind of hard on tough to compete, but good job.
Anybody have anything else?
No, sir.
All right. We will be adjourned. Thank you all for...
Coming.
Coming.
That's a long one today.
Is it an hour?
Yeah, I got to get to my soccer match.
Is it still, are they still doing the wind?
What?
Still having soccer in the wind?
Of course.